We'll call. Toth.
Here.
Obendorf.
Here.
Echol.
Here.
Tinney.
Here.
Owen.
Here.
Heben.
Here.
Reynolds.
Here.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes for the July fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five regular council meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of approving the minutes from July the fourteenth, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Is there a motion to approve the agenda for the August eleventh, two thousand and twenty-five regular council meeting?
Need to add an executive session tonight as well as minutes for public works, facilities, and zoning, and a couple ordinances.
Going to add ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash sixty-one, which is the one that is titled supplemental number thirteen, and then the other one is twenty twenty-five dash sixty-two.
Motion to approve the amendments amended?
Second.
All those in favor of approving the agenda as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Committee reports. Recreation.
Thank you, Mayor. Russell Parks Recreation Committee, four seven fourteen twenty-five. In attendance, Toby Ladisma, Brenna Reynolds, myself, Dan Welburn, Terry McKnight, Caroline Zukowski, Echol. Meeting is called to order at five fifteen P. M. Capital improvement projects, Mr. Ladisma provided updates on some capital improvement projects, including the kitchen and flooring renovation project will start on eight eighteen. Rec Center will be closed on the week of eight twenty-five. New playground equipment for Beet Street Park has been delivered and will be installed later this this summer. Rec Center HVAC has an issue with its condenser. The vendor gave us a quote but needs to order a replacement part. We are looking for a new unit. The Island View Rover has been delivered and will be installed soon. Cleaning service, Recreation Center's new cleaning service started the first week of July. Programs. Football and cheerleading practice has started. Summer camp is ongoing and the last date is eight fifteen. Events, Cedar Creek Serv day is seven twenty-six. They will be doing projects at Island View, Veterans, and Beet Street Parks. River Fest is planned for eight sixteen. Halloween Parade is planned for eight for ten twenty-six, and meeting was adjourned at five fifty P. M.
I just had one thing I wanted to bring up to the Facilities and Parks and Marina Committee, and this has been going on for years, and we've tried a couple of different things, but the geese problem down there, I don't think that anybody would disagree that we need to we need to fix that. They're really doing a lot of, not damage, but it's unhealthy, and I don't think it's safe. So why don't we spend some time, Allison, and and research that? Okay, Public Works.
Public Works Committee met Wednesday, August sixth, five thirty P. M. Mark G. Zukowski, Safety Planning and Zoning Annex. In attendance, Caroline Zukowski, Echol, Bob Toth, Zach Owen, Allison Murray, and Darrell Igoe. Guardrail along Virchill's Alley, along the alley along Virchill's property is scheduled to start this week. Jennings Road update, the project will not be paved for River Fest. The contractor will clean everything up and make the roadway passable. They will also have their equipment set up for a touch-a-truck event during River Fest. Downtown parking and planning continues. Beautification Committee's master plan will be shared with the company doing the renderings and planning for the downtown corridor. We are waiting for lights in City Lot One. We've requested lights from A. E. P., and we have paid for them in full, but we are still waiting. Solar lights will be added at Indian Hills. Administrator Murray is planning to meet with the Wood County Park District. They are interested in helping us establish the new park. Topsoil will cover the areas where the buildings were, and the parking lots will be repaved. The Creek Access at Long-legged Bridge project is ongoing. We received a proposal from Tetra Tech. The land will be cleared and used for storage by Gettys during improvements to Colony Road, and then the Creek Access project will follow. The twenty twenty-six, twenty thirty street paving plan was discussed, continued to be discussed. Next month, the city will go out for R. F. Qs, requests for qualifications for engineers. Personnel, Mr. Igoe would like to hire three instead of two right now. The vacations are hurting us. Zukowski, Echol motion, Toth, second, all voted to approve hiring three right now. Special events were discussed. Mr. Igoe discussed having split shifts in the future, so everyone is not there all day. And paving, Gettys will be here to pave Colony Court, the police and fire lot, the Walnut Street lot, and Indian Hills parking lots.
Okay, any comments or questions? Okay, zoning.
Zoning Committee meeting minutes, the city at the Mark G. Zukowski Safety and Planning Building Tuesday, October fifth. We started at four. In attendance, Caroline Zukowski, Echol, Rachel Tinney, Allison Murray, Chris Kirk, Kevin Heben, Mark Zukowski, Jennifer Hebner, and Rob McConaughey. We discussed Rosford Municipal Code seven two six point zero three, which is maintenance responsibility. Mr. McConaughey brought up the problem with maintenance equipment, lawn mowers, snow blowers. They're being stored in appropriate areas in residential areas. For example, lawn mowers being stored on the front porch. It was decided to require these items to be stored behind the front building line, like we do our garbage cans. Mr. Heben said that he would help us and take care of that matter. Continue the discussion on vacant buildings. We discussed what other cities in Ohio and nationwide have that have a program to ensure building owners are actively working and filling the empty buildings. Mr. Heben said he would help us research on that. Mr. McConaughey stated that the old gas station at Maple and Superior is being demolished due to code violations. Sorry. Discuss progress on rental registrations. Our Swiss City website, Airbnbs. Mr. Zukowski brought up the program I. Works to use in the zoning department. This will be helpful in tracking rental resi- uh registrations, and can produce helpful reports for the zoning department. Mr. Kirk will work on with the zoning department on this. The estimated cost for the program was around forty-two hundred dollars. Will Mr. Heben help us have desist ceased and desist letters sent to any Airbnb operating in a residential area, as this is against code. Mr. McConaughey will provide Mr. Heben with the current Airbnbs that he has discovered. Topic of penalties for operating an Airbnb in a residential area was discussed, as well as a penalty for not registering rental properties. The committee will revisit. The rental registration link from the city's former website is being restored. Number four, we discussed wording changes submitted by Mr. McConaughey for swimming pools and private use. The committee agreed to the submitted change. Mr. Heben will prepare it. We did discuss little libraries. It was decided that we would like to allow them. Again, Mr. Heben will look into the coding wording change for that. And then we did discuss loosely contractor registration. Mr. Kirk wanted to discuss the importance of getting tax I. D. Numbers for all contractors. He would like them listed on all permits registrations. Subcontractors are the hardest to get. It was discussed at RITA, where we might have the resource for this information. The committee will follow up on this to make sure Mr. Kirk is getting the information he needs. We adjourned at five twelve.
Okay, any comments or questions? Okay, reported the mayor and administrator, Allison.
Facilities.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The Facilities, Parks, and Marina Committee met on Thursday, July twenty-fourth, at three P. M. In attendance were Allison Murray, Chris Kirk, Rachel Tinney, Bob Toth, and Brenna Reynolds. The committee reviewed a refund request from a dock renter at the marina. A unanimous decision was made to deny the request due to it being passed to the refund cutoff date of June sixteenth. The downtown pocket park is progressing as the city coordinates with the Wood County building inspection. It is expected to be completed as soon as the W. C. B. I. Approves the work that has been done. Clean fill soil has been deposited at Indian Hills to fortify the ground at the site of the school building. This is done to ensure compliance with standards on the depth to which any potential new construction can go into the ground. The hotels on Clark sign did not receive any bids for a general contractor, so will be subcontracted out for work. Construction on the new public workspace on Wales Road is expected to begin after the design of the lean-to portion of the building is confirmed. Poles for the pedestrian hybrid beacons on Route sixty-five are not available until February of two thousand and twenty-six, so we are looking for comparable poles that may be available sooner. The design is now complete for the solar lighted path along the river at Veterans Park, so we can now get quotes for the project. The committee discussed methods for collecting information on how residents utilize city parks and recreation services to better understand the ways in which we can meet the unique needs of our community. The committee suggested providing opportunities for public input and will coordinate with the Parks Department to formalize a plan. The meeting adjourned at three fifty-two P. M.
Any comments or questions? I did find out this afternoon that the last inspection, the electrical inspection at the pocket park will be done Wednesday morning, and it should be a hundred percent completely done by the end of the day Friday. Reporter of the mayor and administrator, Allison.
Thank you, Mayor. First up tonight, we have two permit requests from Tom Kralovic at one thirty-four Windsor Drive. He will be having a special event on August thirtieth and thirty-first, in which he is requesting parking on the east side of the road temporarily, only at Windsor Drive, from eleven A. M. To one A. M. So he did a permit for both the thirty-first and the thirtieth. So all he's requesting is parking on the east side just for these two days while he has his event.
There a motion?
So moved.
Motion to approve the permit from Mr. Kralovic to on Windsor?
Second. Who made that? I thought Mr. Heben.
I think he seconded the mayor.
No, I said so moved.
Oh, so moved. I'm sorry.
So do you want to second?
Sure, I'll second it. You're off, Zach. Sorry.
All those in favor of the motion to allow parking on the east side of Windsor Drive on the thirtieth and thirty-first, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you. And the last I have, permit-wise, is Danny's is once again requesting, you guys already approved the one on ten twenty-five, October twenty-fifth. You approved it earlier this year for the Halloween zombie walk. Now he is requesting just Bergen Street to be closed on October eleventh for a, you can see the portion that he's looking to close, Bergen Street, and just his parking in front of Danny's and the neighboring building, and that would be on October eleventh for an Oktoberfest in which he plans to have several polka bands in and brats and an Oktoberfest-type theme. This would not require the rerouting of any type of detours or roadway.
Have they discussed anything with the people on Bergen?
He has actually talked to the bank several times. He talks to them. He's very good about that. He actually purchases the signs, the temporary signs that are needed in order to indicate where they turn around in order to use the A. T. M. And.
What about the residents of Bergen?
That I don't know.
This would be the third?
They would have access through the alleyways, both ways. So it would only be shut from the alley to Superior Street.
As long as there's access, I'll make a motion to approve. Second.
All those in favor of the motion to approve the permit for Danny's on October the eleventh, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Last item I have tonight, Mayor, is to announce that Andy Cole from Tarda contacted the city, and Tarda would like to hold a press conference from the pocket park next Tuesday, August nineteenth, at ten A. M. We hope to have as many members of city council present as possible. Tarda is very excited about our pocket park concept, and they will have representatives of Tarda as well as dignitaries from the other communities in northwest Ohio that received the light funding, just like the city funded all of the pocket park with the light funds. So anybody that would be available next Tuesday, August nineteenth, at ten A. M., we would like them to come out to the pocket park to celebrate.
I won't be here.
Okay.
Okay. I just have a couple things. Just a reminder that River Fest is this Saturday, which I think is one of the best events that not only we put on, but all the hard work that Toby and his team and Darrell put together, and it's a great time for young and old alike and everybody in the in the middle. And then on Sunday, we have the Bands for Bulldogs, which will consist of bands at Cinco, Mo's, Danny's, and Red's. Pocket Park again will be will be done, and that that should be a great weekend, I mean, a great event, and make a really great weekend. Mr. Watts, was there any correspondence?
Yes, I have several pieces of correspondence.
Oh, I did. I'm sorry. I'm a little rusty. We haven't had a meeting in a while. No, I'd like to nominate Greg Marquette to sit on the nuisance abatement board.
What do you need from us? According to the code, you approve or disapprove? Motion to approve.
Second. All those in favor of approving the nomination of Greg Marquette to the nuisance abatement board, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Al, go ahead.
One, just to remind you again, I think I sent an email to you. Northwest Water Sewer District has extended the deadline for nominations for the board till August twenty-fifth. The application packets are on the counter up front. Second, and more importantly, you did this previously for Quick Trip for the transfer of a beer permit. They are now requesting, because there are no wine carryout permits, requesting a transfer of a wine permit, and council would have to make a motion to allow that.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor of approving the motion for the transfer of a permit for Quick Trip, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, and then I have two memos. To Lieutenant Craig Revelle from Chief Todd Kitzler, this is dated July twenty-eighth. Lieutenant Revelle, I would like to take this opportunity to recognize your outstanding efforts in organizing and planning the law enforcement operation at the Rosford Balloon Festival on July eighteen nineteen, two thousand and twenty-five. Your attention to detail and willingness to bring several organizations together as a team led to the successful outcome and safety of this event. Keep up the outstanding work. The second one is to Lieutenant Revelle, Sergeant Brandon Lewis, Officer Tyler Nagy, Officer Travis Whitmore, Officer Alec Vaughn, Officer Michael Sebastian, and Officer Ricky Dum. This is dated July twenty-eighth. I would like to take this opportunity to recognize your response and handling of the domestic violence incident and S. R. T. call-out on July nineteen, two thousand and twenty-five. Law enforcement's response to this type of call can be one of the most dangerous things we do as a profession. All of you displayed our core values of professionalism, integrity, pride, excellence, service, and dedication to bring this incident to a peaceful end. Keep up the excellent work. This was also from Chief Kitzler. That's it, Mayor.
Okay. Introduction of ordinances. Is there a motion to read ordinance twenty twenty-five dash five-three by title only?
So moved. Second. All those in favor of reading by title only, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Twenty twenty-five dash fifty-three is an ordinance certifying to the county auditor an assessment and lean upon certain property in the city of Rosford pursuant to Rosford Municipal Code Section thirteen twenty-seven point oh-seven and declaring an emergency. This is the second reading.
Allison.
This is our yearly when we place all of the nuisance abatements that were not paid. We place these on the tax duplicate at the county. We are allowed to do this one time a year, and it's the first Monday in September. So we would like this passed in order to be able to do so.
Move for suspension of the third reading.
Second.
Is there anyone in the audience that would have a problem with us passing this this evening, or any questions in regards to it? No.
All those in favor of suspending with the third reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Move to declare ordinance twenty twenty-five dash fifty-six an emergency.
Second.
All those in favor of declaring an emergency, please say aye.
Aye.
Sorry, fifty-three. Ordinance fifty-three. I apologize.
All those in favor of declaring an emergency, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Move adoption.
Second.
Vote on the motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-five dash fifty-three. Heben.
Aye.
Reynolds.
Aye.
Toth.
Aye.
Obendorf.
Aye.
Echol.
Aye.
Tinney.
Aye.
Owen.
Aye.
Is there a motion to read ordinance twenty twenty-five dash five-six by title only?
So moved. Second. All those in favor of reading by title only, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Twenty twenty-five dash fifty-six is an ordinance authorizing the city administrator to move forward on the Hotel Monument sign project for the Rosford Convention and Visitors Bureau and declaring an emergency. This is the second reading.
Allison.
This is the sign that the Convention and Visitors Bureau has been waiting on for several years. We were unable to get any bids when we bid it out, so we went out and got individual subcontractors in order to get this sign built, because it's much needed. So if council would consider approving that tonight, we would appreciate it.
Move suspension of the third reading.
Second.
Does anyone in the audience have a problem with us passing this this evening, or any questions in regards to it? No.
All those in favor of suspending with the third reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Move to declare an emergency.
Second. All those in favor of declaring an emergency, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Move adoption.
Second. Vote on the motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-five dash fifty-six. Echol.
Aye.
Obendorf.
Aye.
Toth.
Aye.
Reynolds.
Aye.
Heben.
Aye.
Owen.
Aye.
Tinney.
Aye.
Is there a motion to read ordinance twenty twenty-five dash five-nine by title only?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of reading by title only, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Twenty twenty-five dash fifty-nine is an ordinance authorizing a change order and amending the contract with Devon- Devonfall on the pocket park project and declaring an emergency. This is the first reading.
Allison.
This is a change order in the amount of eleven thousand one hundred and twenty-one dollars and seventy-three cents. In order to get the pocket park finished, we came into a lot of things that anytime we open up the road here in Rosford, there's all kinds of things that you don't anticipate. So this would be the final change order for this project.
Finance committee discussed this, and with the relatively small amount to get the project completed, we thought it was the right thing to move forward and have this approved. So I'll make a motion to suspend with the second and third reading.
Second.
Is there anyone in the audience that would have a problem with us passing this this evening, or any questions in regards to it? No.
All those in favor of suspending with the second and third reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion to declare an emergency. Second.
All those in favor of declaring an emergency, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Move adoption. Second.
Vote on the motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-five dash fifty-nine. Owen.
Aye.
Heben.
Aye.
Reynolds.
Aye.
Toth.
Aye.
Obendorf.
Aye.
Echol.
Aye.
Tinney.
Aye.
Is there a motion to read ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zig six zero by title only?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor of reading by title only, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Twenty twenty-five dash sixty is an ordinance to approve current replacement pages to the Rosford Municipal Code and declaring an emergency. This is the first reading.
Allison.
Every year, we get the replacement pages that go in our green book for the Rosford Municipal Code, and we need an ordinance in order to replace the old ones with the new ones.
Move suspension of the second and third readings.
Second.
Will anyone in the audience have a problem with us passing this this evening, or any questions in regards to it? No.
All those in favor of suspending with the second and third reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Move to declare an emergency. Second.
All those in favor of declaring an emergency, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Move adoption. Second.
Vote on the motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-five dash sixty. Echol.
Aye.
Tinney.
Aye.
Owen.
Aye.
Heben.
Aye.
Reynolds.
Aye.
Toth.
Aye.
Obendorf.
Aye.
Is there a motion to read ordinance twenty twenty-five dash six-one by title only?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor of reading by title only, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Twenty twenty-five dash sixty-one is an ordinance amending supplemental number thirteen, the annual appropriation measure for the year beginning January one, two thousand and twenty-five, and ending December thirty-one, two thousand and twenty-five, passed by ordinance twenty twenty-four dash seven-nine. This is the first reading.
Chris.
Thank you, Mayor. So this ordinance would appropriate a fund transfer from our law enforcement trust fund to our seized fund holding account. Essentially, in conjunction with R. P. D., we initially deposited deposited seized funds based on a court order from the county. County later came back and said the case was not finalized, so this would transfer those seized funds back to our related holding account as we wait for the case to conclude.
Move to suspend the second and third reading.
Second.
Is there anyone in the audience who would have a problem with us passing this this evening, or any questions in regards to it? No.
All those in favor of suspending with the second and third reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Move adoption.
Second.
Vote on the motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-five dash sixty-one. Heben.
Aye.
Reynolds.
Aye.
Toth.
Aye.
Obendorf.
Aye.
Echol.
Aye.
Tinney.
Aye.
Owen.
Aye.
Is there a motion to read ordinance twenty twenty-five dash six-two by title only?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor of reading by title only, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Twenty twenty-five dash sixty-two is an ordinance for transfer of funds for the year beginning January one, two thousand and twenty-five, and ending December thirty-one, two thousand and twenty-five. This is the first reading.
So this essentially just maps out the transfer that we just appropriated.
Motion.
Suspension of second, third readings. Second.
Is there anyone in the audience who would have a problem with us passing this this evening, or any questions in regards to it? No.
Move adoption.
All those in favor of suspending with the second and third reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Move adoption. Second.
Vote on the motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-five dash sixty-two. Echol.
Aye.
Obendorf.
Aye.
Toth.
Aye.
Reynolds.
Aye.
Heben.
Aye.
Owen.
Aye.
Tinney.
Aye.
Mr. Watts, are there any resolutions this evening?
Resolutions, Mayor.
Okay, council remarks. Councilman Toth.
I would like to thank our, all of our city services, fire, police, city public works for a hard, well-done job. Guys busting your butts this summer, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Councilman Obendorf?
Nothing.
Councilwoman Echol?
Um, we've had some great events this summer, and it's not stopping. We still have more coming. Thanks to our safety services and public works and Toby for working so hard on those events. Thanks to the C. V. B. and Beth Johnson for the wonderful balloon fest. We had a C. V. B. meeting this past week, and and the Google rating was like an eighty-four or something approval. So you know how they throw out those those surveys? So that's that's pretty good, considering it rained the second day, and they consider between seventy and ninety good. So I don't think you get scores over ninety. But so that's that's wonderful. The all-years reunion, the festival, I mean, there's been so much going on this this summer. It's 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 just been fun. I want to thank Mr. Kralovic for asking for parking on both sides of the road. That's just such a nice idea, you know, to 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 ask instead of just clog everything up for the for the residents. And finally, River Fest, go out and enjoy it.
Everything Councilwoman Echol said, I second. Thanks.
Okay, Councilman Owen.
Just a big thanks for Brad Morrison, the Danny's team, and all of our volunteers and public works team that that put on that all-years alumni event. It was a lot of fun, and we can do that again. That was a great event.
Councilman Heben.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Councilwoman Reynolds.
Thank you to everyone who has put so much energy into making this such an awesome summer, especially balloon fest, because I went up in one of those things, and it might have taken a few years off my life, but it was worth it. And I am super excited for Stroll the Street tomorrow, and River Fest, and then we've got spooky season, so lots of good things happening.
All right. All right. Audience remarks.
Diane Wolfe, 264 Jennings, at the epicenter of construction 2.0. Not to sound like a broken record, but the total disregard to the stop sign has come to an all-time high. I've never, like, I would, I don't even drive down Jennings Road, because I don't want to hurt my car, but seems that people aren't feeling the same way. I sit on my patio and some evenings just videotape for my own cathartic weird reasons. I don't know why. It's habitual, it's not everyone, but like, not even slowing down, coming full force all the way down the street. And it's now starting to carry over onto Hoffman. As they go Hoffman and Windsor, there's a lot of small children that live in that block, and grandmother and father of one of the little ones asked how she goes about putting a fence across both of her properties so this little guy can't, can't come out to the street because people are just completely not regarding the stop signs. I don't know what we can do about it. I would love to see something fixed. It's still speed, too. I don't, I don't understand that. I won't go over 12 miles an hour up and down Jennings when I do have to go up it, but something needs to happen, because it's becoming more and more dangerous. We have a young man who lives on Jennings Road part of the time with his dad and stepmom. And my husband was sitting on the patio, just recuperating from surgery, and watched a front-end loader, a truck, and a car. Two of them were the construction vehicles. And Keegan was on his motorized scooter, coming to get onto Hoffman to enjoy his scooter, and had he not stopped, he would have been killed, because no one else stopped. Three other vehicles didn't stop. It takes a 10-year-old kid, maybe 11, to be the smart one to stop at a stop sign. And had he not stopped and run into Verbaskey's yard, I, I don't know what would have happened, because it was two pieces of heavy equipment, a large, a dump truck, and a front-end loader. I don't want to be the one holding anyone's child as they're injured or dying in my front yard. I just don't want to see it happen. So I'm urging somebody to come up with a solution. I wish I could be that person to come up with a solution. I've offered before, to have anyone come and sit on my patio that wants to, to just see it. It's, it's sad and scary to watch it.